Are we agreeing across the board? You can. Agenda review. Suggested changes to the agenda.
Well, as we did last week, sir, I'd like to turn around on item five, item C. I'd like to move that to A. If I could, that's Tracy's thing.
I would. Let me suggest that Ms. Neal is here. I think she'll have a pretty short report or so.
Very well, I withdraw that then. Thank you.
That's okay. And we may have to delay until Police Chief gets. We'll do that informally if that's satisfactory to everyone. Move to accept the agendas. Written.
I'll second it.
I guess I moved it. All right. All those posed. Very good. Slick. So ordered. Public comment. Public comments. Three minutes. If you're here, if you'll come sit up here so other people can hear you and see you. If you're monitoring by television, if you'll unmute yourself or raise your hand rather and call upon you and you can unmute yourself and speak. If you're monitoring by telephone, it's star six. You'll let us know. We'll recognize you and you can unmute yourself and we'll speak. So anyone here present? Don't see any comment. Oh, sorry, Mr. Russell.
I always want to be first.
Sorry.
So be brief.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, just a couple of quick questions. When Dan and I know you may not answer and I get that. The interviews with Foster's and in the Hampshire Journal, you were quoted as saying that the special town meeting would cost approximately six to eight thousand. I know that the that that is a quotes in the two articles and we know press gets it wrong because I've been dealing with the press for a long time as well. I didn't know if that was an underestimate, if that was a misquote, and I can understand it may have been. I just was wondering how we got from that to 20,000 because obviously it's some significantly different numbers. With the deliberative session right around the corner, I just want to let everyone know. I spoke to County Attorney Tom Velardi two days ago and there's a lot of information out there and I encourage everyone to have, you know, the First Amendment. You get to say what you want. There is currently an active and open investigation of the government of the town of Barrington by County Attorney Tom Velardi. Now, obviously innocent until proven guilty. I'm not saying that it's going to turn into anything. It may turn into nothing, but it is. Based on the information that I provided the County Attorney, both that 62-page document and additional documents. It was enough for them to open an investigation. So for people that say the town did no wrong doing, that may be the result. I don't know. Obviously, I'm not doing this investigation. I'm just a citizen, but there is an open investigation. I did speak to the to Tom Velardi directly when I submitted this. There is no set, no knowledge if this is going to be wrapped up by the time of the 20th. He's just doing his thing and I have a lot of respect for the man. That's all I had to say. So I appreciate.
Just to answer your question for general, the cost estimate of the deliberative session is based on previous. By it up because we don't know exactly what it'll cost, but that's around 20,000. I think the 6,000 was referring to the cost of the lawsuit. I believe that's what the lawsuit was.
Okay. I have the document, but we can talk later. I'm not, it's not about, press gets it wrong a lot. I appreciate your time. Sorry.
Is there, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak here? Public? Anyone online, monitoring by television or telephone? Give you about 30 seconds to acknowledge or let us know. Don't see anything. Do you see anything? Okay. End of the public comment section. School Board Liaison Report. Ms. Neal is here. I trust you came to do this.
I did. Well, I also came to see all of you, of course, and just be.
Thank you. I appreciate.
Without moving. The least care of everyone.
Now you know what ECLC. Your kindergarten.
So, good evening. Thank you for giving the school board time and for sharing and partnering in our relationship together. I wanted to first address that Mr. Shea asked a question last meeting and I had said that I would make sure to follow up with that. So your question at the last meeting was in regards to active shooter drills or training. And so I wanted to give that update first. So our superintendent, Deanna, and then also Raymond, met with Chief Joy last week. I don't know if he's here, but to discuss the mandatory active shooter training as well as the response, the possibility or just discussion of hiring a resource, school resource officer and what that means for Barrington. We want to thank the Police Department and Chief Joy, of course, for their continued partnership. And so Chief Joy and his team will be in the district on September 13th to provide a two-hour active. Why not? Am I okay?
Oh, you're coming through. It's just the TV's messing you up.
Okay. So again, Chief Joy and his team will be on the, in the district September 13th to provide a two-hour active shooter training to staff. And I want to, before I go into more detail about that, I think it's important for me to take a second to explain when I, what I mean when I say training and what I mean when I say drill. And I talked to our administrators too, to make sure that I understood. So training is not the same as drill, but I know sometimes we use that interchangeably. So training is not bringing in the forces and actually going through a simulation. This is sitting down and talking and learning together. And I want to preface that also this is part, the active shooter training is part one of 10 state mandatory trainings that all schools have to go through. So this isn't necessarily react, you know, reactive to what has happened at the end of last year. This is something that all schools have to do and that is not include the children. So that's just learning together and understanding the process and any things that may have changed or any RSAs that may may be updated. And then this training will be followed by a drill at a later date, which will count as that one of 10 hazard drills required by all New Hampshire schools. And so I know that sometimes, especially with the age range of children from pre-K to eight, that can make parents feel or families feel a little uncomfortable. What does that mean for my child, especially when you're thinking of little ones? So this, this is one of those has hazard drills. Most hazard, sorry, taking a while. I'm so hot. Most hazard drills, you, you have to do the same thing at every, at every building regardless of the, of the age, but active shooter drills are actually ones that are okay and are encouraged to be developmentally appropriate. So a great example would be, of course, we're not going to have the same simulation that we would at the ECLC here for these kiddos that we would at the middle school. And so we're still getting our ducks in a row. And so I think what will happen or what I know will happen is that the district is going to come out with some really detailed information about what does that mean for staff? What does that mean for your student? What's happening at each building? We can't give the date because of course that is not part of the, the training it has to, we can't release that information for, for that purpose, but you will know as, as community members and as parents and families exactly what will happen so that you are fully and what's covered and what your child will be experiencing during that. And then also each principal, in addition to that, will also be giving very specific information about what to expect and what kind of follow-up questions to your children about, you know. So I just wanted to pause for a second and see if there are any questions.
Yeah, I appreciate you following up on that. The next question I would have would be, when was this mandatory for the schools and why haven't we been on it since?
So I can't give that information because as a school board member, that's the day-to-day management of that avenue isn't a superintendent.
I was just curious. I'm glad we're getting on to it now, but I mean, you know, just, you know, it's, it's nice to see it coming and hopefully, you know, any more unforeseen stuff, we can, we can get under our belt before it's, you know, passed by the way.
Absolutely. Training is always a wonderful thing.
Mr. Bailey. Thank you. The cost of this training, is that covered under the COVID package?
I believe so, but I don't want to say that on.
Excellent.
And then not be accurate. So I can, I would, I'm planning on coming to the next meeting as well, so I'm happy to bring the answer to your question and then also the detailed.
Thank you.
Information. And let's see. So then the other things were. There were, we still have staff doing training, even though there's only like three weeks left before the start of school, but we're packing it full. We also have a new district logo. So I encourage people to go to the website and see that. It's really, really, it's great. It's, it's still the roots and wings concept, but just a little updated. Work has begun to install the new intercom and camera systems to secure the vestibules in each of the four district buildings, which again was something we had talked about before last spring. Then a positive note is a new slide was installed at BES. It's something we waited for forever due to not get this slide delivered to us. And I want to thank our facilities team for that. But why that's so special and why I call that out is that there is a student, Daphne Cotton, and in 2021, she was a fourth grader and she came to me and asked why we hadn't replaced the slide that used to be there. It's this huge slide. It's a favorite of children's. And what could she do about it and what, and how can she be involved? So we had to speak at a school board meeting and we just truly forgot with everything going on with COVID, honestly, but it's always great that kids remind us what's really important. Recess. So of course, we made sure to have that happen and we're going to do a little celebration for Daphne and for, for her being a part of her, being involved in civics and being involved with the school board as well at our Welcome Back BES barbecue with more information coming. So we would love to see you there if you're able to. I'll make sure to get the information to you. We'll do a little mini ribbon cutting. It'll be nice.
Good. And could you give us, what, 31 August is the first day of school?
Yes, August 31st is still the first day of school for students.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Neal?
Just to thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
It's great. Great. Thank you very much. Stand if you don't. Chief Joy. Chief Joy to come in. Yes, you did. Rest of us do, you do too.
Where do you want us to sit since we don't?
Wherever you'd like to do it, sir.
That general area.
This general area.
In that area.
Type of thing.
We can see you there.
Can see him, bring him up.
Put the handsome people in the front.
Him in front of you.
Maybe back there to the right one.
My right?
Your right one step.
Perfect.
And then he's right.
And he's right in front. So for transparency's sake, we swore Officer Turner in on the 11th of July with a town clerk. That was the official swearing in. Officer Turner's actually been working since that time, so we're a little late to the ballgame, but I think it's important to get him in front of the community, in front of you folks, and to do a public swearing and penning as well. I, I just think it's good for everybody involved, but because people have seen him out and about, we haven't just been working him with nothing. We, we swore him in officially and this is the public portion. So this is Officer Josh Turner. He is accompanied by his family, wife, children, nephew, somewhere hiding in the back there. Officer Turner is a member of our community, has lived.
Can you bring him in, bring him into the picture, please?
How about I step out of the way and they?
That's even.
Well, that's even, yes, it is.
He, he is a member of our community. He lives in town, so this for him is policing his hometown. He's been a part-time officer in excess of 15 years and has a good resume in that amount of time. So he's going to be a good addition to the department. He actually brings a lot of technical knowledge to us. Rock County does a lot technologically with IMC and a couple of the other systems that we do not do. So he's going to be able to guide us a little bit in that domain too. So that's the long and the short of it. We'll swear again. If you would, raise your right hand, sir, please. I, Joshua C. Turner.
I, Joshua C. Turner.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully.
And affirm that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge and perform.
And impartially discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer of the Barrington, New Hampshire.
As a police officer in the Barrington.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Or, this I do under the pains of perjury.
Or this I do under the pains of perjury.
We'll get them both in there, God and perjury.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. Ms. Hardikoff, just for people's background, Ms. Hardikoff was asked, was hired to conduct a strategic planning review and adoption of a, and direct us, guide us in, by mission. We did that whatever day it was, July 25th. And she's now here to kind of give the final, final report of what we did.
Yeah, so.
Would you please, so, so people can see you.
Sure.
Across the way.
I'm going to hand over to Connor, we're done as well. Connor, you on here? Yes.
Yeah, he's.
So we went through a strategic planning session. It was a working session with the board. The, the role that I played was simple facilitation so that each of the board members could share their vision, their values, and add to the mission statement that collaboratively gets created by five leaders. We went over a lot of data and hopefully that helped us as we went through the process of creating some future plans for the town of Barrington. We're an interesting, growing community and one of the things that struck me in the session was how everyone equally weighed in and had really great ideas as you went about creating your mission, vision and value statement. Connor and I met, used all of your notes from the session, put together the notes for your working session and then put together the final collaborative statements that have been presented to you and placed in record for the meeting. Connor, would you like to carry it from here?
No, that's great. I appreciate it. The, what you have is the draft mission, vision, values and 2022 select board goals. Certainly, there's no expectation that the select board would adopt these tonight. If you feel like you're ready to and you don't feel like anything requires any changes, you're welcome to, but we're also happy to make any changes to these documents or to this document and these factors. The, I think it's important that the mission, vision and values has maintained relatively consistent with previous select boards, but making sure to identify some of the key points that were important to this select board, being civil, community-oriented, sustainability, fiscal responsibility, et cetera. And then the 2022 goals similarly follow a pattern of previous goals focusing on those tasks that aren't accomplished in one year, but take select boards and communities multi, multiple years to accomplish. So happy to answer any questions or like I said, if you feel like you're ready to adopt it, we can do that or bring it back to the next meeting.
Mr. Bailey.
Hi, Tracy. I have a question and I couldn't find the answer anywhere I looked at concerning capitalization. Under the vision where it says government board is all in small letters and, but it's government board and because Barrington is capitalized, I'm asking you to capitalize governing board to go along with it. I don't know. So that's, that's my only question I have. The rest of it I thought was very well written and I appreciate that.
So if your official title was governing board, it's not, it's select board, then you would capitalize it.
Yeah. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Tracy, I just want to thank you for leading us through the process. That was an interesting evening and getting all five of us to come up with a document was, I think, probably challenging, so thank you.
You were pretty succinct, actually. I, I think the most reflective thing I can say is it's great that there's diverse viewpoints on this board and it was excellent, the level of respect and civil, civil engagement that everyone put towards their communication.
I would, I would suggest we consider Connor's recommendation that we move forward with this and accept it. That's, it's not a motion. It's just food for thought if anybody else feels the same way.
Think I heard a motion.
Sounded, sounded moving to me.
Well, all right, I'll make it a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept.
I'll second it.
David, thank you very much.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I, I should announce to people who are here and I apologize Connor for not saying I knew where you were. MacGyver is, is not with us tonight because he had tested positive for COVID and is isolating himself. He is here. How are you doing, Connor? How are you feeling, brother? You making it through?
I've had all the symptoms. I can still smell. That's about, that's about all I haven't had yet. So hang, hanging in there.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, any other? Okay. Thank you very much, Tracy. It was excellent. Concur with all that. That very nicely. Issuing a building permit, public hearing. Attention, it's a building permitted on Rocky Point Road, private road for David R. Torrey, app 118, lot 21. Please.
Good evening. Ray Bisson from Stonewall Surveying. I'm Representative David and Joyce Torrey, 68 Rocky Point Road. I actually have a pretty good synopsis of what's going on, but I think I'm going to kind of, it's so hot.
Yeah.
Shorten it down a little bit and give you a quick recap. If we have to get into more detail, we can. Last year, we went through the ZBA. What they want to do is they want to replace their one-story house. It's about with a footprint of 570 square feet, but they, a two-story house with a footprint of 816 square feet. The new lot is more centered on to the lot. It's more parallel to property lines. It actually reduces the coverage, lot coverage from 52% to 43.8%. The series visions. One of the things that it does do is the parking lot where the parking space is, is pretty small and awkward. This is going to strain it out and allow for two cars to easily be able to pull one and back out. We got approval of September 2021. In December, we got shirling and set the sign of approval. And then everything came up with the new road policy through the, through the channels. So Rocky Point Road is about 900 foot long. It's 15 home service and it's a paved surface, varies between 10 and 13 feet in width with small gravel shoulders. The right-of-way varies, but is around 16 feet in width. The road is maintained yearly by the Rocky Point Neighborhood Association, which was established in 2017 and it's on file with the state of New Hampshire. The state filing states to provide a financial base in order to maintain and improve Rocky Point and further provide an organization for determining is necessary overseeing its completion and assessing funding required at. Each year, sections of the road are updated and repaired as needed. Association is also recorded at the Rock, I mean, sorry, Stratford County RCDs. So they already have a base of maintenance of the road in place. Overall, the road is in good condition, but does not meet the criteria of a class six or private way road for the building policy. Well, the right-of-way is narrow and winding. It's not feasible to widen the road. Even adding gravel shoulders will encroach, encroach onto abutting property owners, which may impact. Set, set the design is our book close to the road and there's fences near the road. And basically the client can't forcibly take any land in order to widen that road in that area. The best approach on this is just a maintenance of the paved service, which they do yearly. The, there is a turnaround. And from reading the staff reports, the chief of police have, there's no issue with the current road condition. The fire chief will support the select board's decision. The road agent recommends this road be left alone. You can see that in the, his letter that he did. The association also signed the letter that they don't feel that the Torrey should be subject to the road repairs. The planning board supports the department head's opinions and have no objection to the applicant proposing no improvements to the 10% requirement. Board feels this is a viable in a waiver. Any questions? That for now is.
There were some, there are some plans, are there not, to have a turnaround?
There, at the end of the road, there already is an area to turn around and there was an incident that actually the fire chief or, or chief of police could discuss that there was, the very end, someone went off, actually in their yard, touched it off to put the brake on and instead hit the gas and went into the lake. And so they had tow truck, ambulances, police cars and such all down there and they all were able to maneuver and come out. I mean, they're, they are here so they could speak about that. But there is a substantial area that, you know, that's down at the end.
And, and were there some plans to change something on Young Road as well?
On Young Road? No.
Mr. Chair, that's the next application.
Sorry. Okay. Thank you. That's why we invite him.
Right.
Okay.
So this came before the planning board and I drove over to look at it. It's a really tight neighborhood. There is a very narrow road, lots of really small lots. There's a sharp turn to get on it, but the problem is there's, it's a paved road already and there's just nowhere to put shoulders. Planning board looked at it, just couldn't figure out how that road could be widened.
One of the recommendations from the road agent was basically if you say were to add shoulder, you know, basically say, okay, add gravel to the shoulder. Now what you're doing is you're going to have impact because water is going to have to dam up before it can, so in his, he basically recommended that it be left alone.
I think that the whole purpose of our class six private road, we've debated this a lot, back and forth a lot, is that we're very concerned about the access to our emergency services. And that is what's kind of drive, what drives this whole policy. And we've gone back and forth on it, but I think want to be pretty serious about this. So it really depends, at least in my opinion, depends a great deal on what the road agent and fire chief say, because they're the people that have to, have to maneuver these things if needed. Hopefully, hopefully we'll never, we'll never need that, but they, they're the people who are. You do have a private road association, there's have private. Particular issue, I think.
I mean, I know that the policy itself, I mean, there's a lot of roads in, denied are not in bad shape. There are driveways that are longer than some of the private ways that are in bad shape, you know, but this is one of those that is kind of exception because it's been, they actually used to be part of the Micah Point Association. That's why 2007, before that they were part of the Rocky Point, but they weren't getting, I'm sorry, Micah Point, but they weren't really getting, in a sense, their fair share of repairs because of Micah Point. So that's why they split off. So, that's why they split off and been doing all the maintenance since then.
Questions, group?
The way I see this is, you know, if it's already paved and, you know, and if, what he said from the, the chief and the, the road commissioner, I mean, it's just one of those tight spots in Barrington that's forever gonna be there if we can't widen it. So, you know, they're already living there. It's, you know, I don't know. Chief. It's very.
Chief Walker, have you been able to get your, have you been able to get your vehicles down into there?
As I've explained before, we'll do everything we can to get a vehicle anywhere we have to. But yes, we have got them.
And, can you get in and out reasonably?
Yes.
Sure.
I'm at 21 Rocky Point, same road.
I'm sorry, we, we, no one else can hear you except over here. For the people who are online.
I, I'm at 21 Rocky Point Road.
And can go up your name again?
My name is David Olds.
Thank you.
I, I just got garbage service. I asked the garbage truck driver, is it a problem coming down here to pick up the garbage? And they said, no, we don't even have to back down. They drive the truck down, they pick up my garbage, and they drive out. They turn around in the turnaround spot. Really large vehicle. I'm not saying it's a fire truck, but it's large.
Thank you.
When I drove over there, I was following an Amazon delivery truck that went down that road.
So, we could tow you back out? No kidding. Chairman, I'd just like to reiterate, as a member of the zoning board, we went through this and we heard it, and we understood that we granted it because there is a hardship to it, and that's one of the reasons why we did it. Is because there's just no way of taking the, either side from the other people that live there to upgrade the road. So, I, that's, that's where I stand.
Any other questions of anyone? We have a motion of some sort?
No, no, we gotta, you gotta take those that speak in favor, those that speak against.
Or just open the public hearing.
All right.
Yeah.
I was doing, but okay.
Perhaps if we're going to, in the past, when we've made an accommodation on established policy, we got a lot of flack for that. And so, is there a way that we need to modify the policy that allows for roads that don't have any option for improvement? The acceptance there, you know, and, and my, my understanding is that the funds go to fix the road where the destruction would occur, you know, as opposed to a general kind of fund or anything that could be used on other Class 6 roads or. But should the, the, if we were to make this exception, should we also be adjusting the policy that allows that to be valid?
I would suggest that's a separate, I think it's a pertinent issue, but I think it's kind of a separate issue at this point.
Well, we're gonna bring that up under.
Just to suggest we bring that up under new business in a little bit.
I think also in the past, we've been dealing with dirt roads. So.
Yeah. And any other comments from the public? Those of you who are online, if you'll hold up your hand on your computer, those who are on telephone, star six. I don't see anything online. Hey. We will conclude the public hearing. What sort of motion do we have? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the waiver of the road improvement requirements of the Class 6 and private road building policy and authorize the issuance of a building permit, map 18, lot 21 on Rocky Point Road.
Second. There's a second? Favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I think, Mr. Gibson?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to be able to follow our policy, but I think for this one, it makes sense to give away.
Mr. Scotia, nodding, yes?
Yes.
George, aye. Mr. Bailey, aye, sorry.
That's all right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for. Okay. Second public hearing, in this case, Robert and Sarah Grumbles, 55 Cottage Lane, map 115, lot 11. Join us, please.
Unified Builders. At 55 Cottage Lane, requesting a partial waiver for the Class 6 and 10% of construction cost. We've, you know, early on in this, in this project, I met with Chief Walker to discuss the concerns, the issues that we have on Cottage Lane with regard to public safety access. And while we'll note that there have been, in the last, I believe, 16 months, three ambulances and vehicles down Cottage Lanes, Cottage Lane. One of the, the biggest issues for the fire chief was that vehicles would have to back out in order to get off Cottage Lane and to get back on Young Road. So, we've gone through several revisions to try to set road, one of which was to talk to the new owner of the old property. Areas bottom, and he agreed to allow us to improve, take part of that land down below his property to improve the lane. And in fact, we went through a couple of revisions to the point where at the largest section of that roadway, we could expand it to 31 feet to allow for public safety vehicles to turn around. As well, Mr. and Mrs. Grumbles paid $2,000 for a little sliver of land in front of their home. Very sharp turn because that's one of the other issues. It was very, very tight there. In fact, it says 12 foot. It was actually 11 foot. It's very, very tight. And so, we were able to take some of Mr. Stillwagon's land and the portion of land that they paid for to expand that to. So, as well, and before you make that turn, there's a flat, very hard surface area, approximately 4,200 square feet before you would make that sharp turn. So, any vehicles coming in that go all the way down to the end of the road would have the 31, 31 feet with about 1,511 square feet to turn around. Part of that of 4,200 square feet for any urgency vehicles to turn around. And we submitted our, actually, we've submitted three revisions in trying to keep with the budget so that we can make this project happen for the Grumbles. So, we looked further down the road. As you enter from Young Road, one of the suggestions from Fire Chief was to add a paved apron entry from Young Road onto Cottage Lane. And you'll see that in our, our estimate for improvements. Additionally, the land owner that Cottage Lane lies on is selling their property, and they don't want to give up anything more, period. It's, it's all on their land. We've tried, but we simply couldn't get them to put this on it. The, we did speak to a prospective buyer, actually, three of them, seems to be very serious. She contacted us because she saw our sign out there. Asking about the property to the left facing the lake, the one that's for sale. And she worked with John Huckins about, you know, what to build there, so on and so forth. And he let her know that, hey, you're gonna have to improve if, you know, you're going to rebuild there, to which she said, that's fine. But to, you know, the property's not sold yet. There's no, there's no contract there. So, you, you never really know. But we took a look. You first enter into Cottage Lane, 18 foot, and then it narrows to 14 feet around the first bend. We, working with our excavator, we found that we could actually expand that first turn to 22 feet wide. And then, as you go up Cottage Lane, it widens from the initial turn to 16 feet. And we see that we can actually get 18 feet out of, out of that part of the roadway. The rest, there's a lot of ledge, there's stone, and again, it's, it's land that we just can't get cooperation from the owner of that, that land. So, again, you know, there's a lot of sweat equity that's gonna go into improving this road to try to keep his, his budget down to where he can afford to make the improvements to his home. He has mobility issues, and it's, I believe in your packet, you would see a letter from his saying that these improvements need to be made to his home. So, again, you know, with the, the estimate, with all of the improvements, we're at 18,000. His budget since we first reported has dropped from 380,000 to 3, it gets 323. That's about 6% of 10% requirement. And, you know, frankly speaking, that's as far as we can go. About stealing some of it. So, we're, understand and allow us this partial waiver for the road improvements there. I know it's not the, the most ideal situation. It is a definite improvement to this road. It'll be, again, freighted, expanded where it can, and even in some cases, and hearing what the issues were with getting the public safety vehicles back there. The road cannot, it will not, nobody can, else can build on the road. There's only the three homes. There's gonna be no more traffic. The buyers that we've, prospective buyers that we've spoken to are all single families, so there's no concern about like anything like that. Property currently, a tear down. So, since nobody could build beyond, there was no concern for future construction there and traffic. Now, there's just nowhere else to go. And then, again, with the improvements, 31 feet at the end, 2 feet with front, which exceeds the requirements for the Class 6. And then improving that turn to 16 feet, and then having 4,200 square feet with which to turn around. Respectfully request that this partial waiver be granted.
One is just a question. There's clearing opposite your house. Is that development off Lindsey Road, or will it come in off?
That's off Lindsey Road. Yeah, Lindsey Point.
And when you were presented, planning board, the planning board talked about how sweat equity is actually, can be part of this 10%. And we asked you to quantify what that would be on this road, but I don't see any figures here.
Yeah, it was very difficult to quantify. We were, we're pulling some gravel from another job site, but I couldn't get enough numbers back in time to get this presented to the board after you, that the planning board made that recommendation. I just couldn't get the numbers together from, that I needed to. So.
That might have been, that would be helpful in our thinking.
I'm sure. Yeah, absolutely. Would it be another 16, $18,000 worth? Using our volunteers that work, to work on it, and it's all about the material after that and machine time. So, I, it's just.
Mr. Scotia, how do you stand it first?
So, this approximate 4,200 square feet clearing, I mean, is that just dirt right there?
Yeah, it's hard-packed dirt.
So, not you, your neighbor, or who's there now, but we have to make decisions for the future, right? My concern is, is if we have these big turnarounds and, you know, we get that small percentage of people that move in there and go, okay, well, you know, and I have three buddies coming up, and we're gonna do fishing, and we're gonna pull our trailers, trucks in here. And then that would permit, if we had to get down there with a fire truck to, for turning around. Are there any provisions to prevent that?
So, you have.
I, I get the occasional graduation party, whatnot, everybody having a good time, but, you know, this is something that could come up in the future.
Sure, hard to predict something like that, but you do have the 31 feet at the end of Cottage Lane, so you would just proceed, you could turn around.
And that's, that's the property that's, that we're talking about here, 31?
That's right at the end of the, that's the, the next house over.
Lot 12.
Lot 12, okay.
Maybe I have misplaced it, or, hey, but I can't find the layout for the road.
I do think with your presentation, I think it was great, especially with what you can do where.
Let me see if I got that.
And, you know, and I know it's, it's not the easiest policy that we have for the Class 6. I think it looks really well. I would just, you know, just be, you know, want, want the guys to be able to, be able to turn around down there.
Yeah, absolutely. And that was our goal.
Yeah.
And in talking with Chief Walker, that was the biggest issue, and then being able to get out of there.
Mr. Bailey, can you see my screen?
Yeah.
So, this is at the very back of your packet. You have a printed copy of this. Are you talking about the road layout or the lot, lot layout?
The black and white one, sir.
Okay.
I think we have it here.
Yeah. You know, help, I did find it. Thank you.
That, that's really a sharp curve. Is that the one we're talking about, reradusing, or the, are you talking about the curve just off of Young Road?
Yeah, there are, are a few sharp curves. The first one is right off of Young Road. That's the one that is currently at 14 feet in width that we are proposing to make the 22.
Dwayne, if you wanna come around, we, we gotta pump it up.
This is the first, this is the first hard turn. Rocks over here. This is the next kind of sharp, it's not as sharp, obviously, as this right here, but it's probably 16 that we can make to 18 feet. The worst one is right here.
Yeah.
It's very sharp. There's a huge tree that required a crane, rather, to get it out of there. But this wind shear that we had actually shaved off some trees. He bought this little sliver, this neighbor up here. And we measured that we could improve it to 16 feet, and then there was a little bit more of a shoulder that actually went to about 19 feet. We measured it right from the tree onto a little bit more of his property. It'll allow us to grade it, put the stone, and this right here. Again, the existing is 13 feet. We're going to 22, 27.9, and then 31 respectively. By grading, putting stone, there's a few small trees that we've given permission to remove as well.
Is that way down, or is that on the next property too?
Stillwagon and Mr. Grumbles property. Mr. Grumbles property is this right here.
Okay.
This is Mr. Stillwagon. And then this gentleman, he parks his, as a trailer with a, park it up here, and then there's all of it as well. Even if one came in, turned around, certainly back, and even if you had to, for some reason, if the truck was coming up here, and you had to back up, you've got all the sands, obviously.
I'd like to ask Chief Walker if that turnaround is adequate in your eyes for your.
I have a cup. I have a cup.
Mr. Bailey?
May I address the board?
Please.
If some of yous will remember that, when we brought up and rewrote this program for that, we had concerns of safety for our, not police, ambulance, fire, and also for the individuals that were traveling the road. And right now, everything that sits before me, our department heads, that we put a lot of faith into, have said it's not adequate and should not be passed. I would ask everybody to consider that, or we could turn around and put a continuance until the plan is out and what have you. Because if, if, from what I understand, you, someone said Thursday, you know, we didn't, Thursday's not enough time for all of us to review it. Also, on this layout, it doesn't show how close the wetlands are. And do we have enough room for the wetlands to go back and see if we can fit it in that way there also? Are the wet, wetlands going to impede on widening the road? Well, that, that's another hardship, but that's not considered here yet. So, I just ask you to reconsider, everything is there. Mostly consider our department heads letters that we pay to turn around and help us make this town safe. And if we sit here and ignore what they have attested to, we're not doing our job. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else on the board have any questions, comments? Public comment, please. Yes, ma'am, if you could come up, so at least we could see you, give your name, please.
Hi, my name is Crystal Conley, I'm the owner of the property next door that's for sale. We don't have any issue with what these folks are trying to do. Our only limitation is at that first sharp curve, onto their area. Our leach field is right there, so we don't really have any property that we could give up. Because it's right close to that roadway, right of way.
On, on the south side of the, oh, which way are we, here? On the right side of the road.
What lot number is yours, ma'am, please?
I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
Are you in the wetlands, or you where the cleared out area is?
I would come down the main, can I come over and take a?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, please. Okay.
This is our house right here, so our septic, I mean, our septic and our leach field is right here.
Looks like lot twenty-four?
So, yeah, there's the, it's right there.
That lot twenty-four?
Ten.
No, it, there's no.
Lot ten.
This is strong here.
It's a lot ten, George.
Lot ten.
Yours is a two and a half, or two plus acre property, yeah.
Yeah, I see nothing about.
Twelve thirteen, how come I don't have?
Are there any other, are there any other comments? Thank you so much. There any other comments, anyone?
Do I see that?
Here, sure.
Is that forty-two hundred square feet, who owns that?
I don't have this one. My file here.
What happens?
Backside of the sheet.
What's going to happen to that?
People that we've spoken to that are interested in the same footprint.
Sheet.
They would be asking for.
That's all right, I understand.
I would have to, I don't know, in my opinion, I'd, I'd have to see what our, our fire chief thinks about, you know, the turnarounds and whatnot. Maybe there could be proposed signage on one side, so, you know, there's no parking on one side to, to help the vehicles come through for future, and just trying to keep things orderly down there when we can. I mean, I know it's not going to be mainstream, party central, but once again, we have to think about the future and, you know, what's ahead of us. Because if that sells and somebody goes, oh, you know what, I really want to put a garage there. Then, you know, there's no big turnaround coming down there, so.
I'd be a little concerned of the radius of that curve, suspect that take us hindering.
And you said there was a big tree there, right, big pine tree?
Yeah.
Is that tree near the leach field of your neighbor, or?
It's on the opposite side.
So that could come down.
It's on the inside.
Could come down.
I don't have.
Owner of that property is not one of those, that tree, Mr. Stillwagon. Allowed us to go right close to it, but that's as far as you can see where we kind of, we shaved that off to make that sixteen foot.
No, it's.
With on the turn, yeah. Couldn't give it up.
I would like to lay it.
Anyone else on the board? Anyone in the audience, anyone else? Watching online?
Here.
Raise your hand, your computer, your telephone, you do star six, or any comments? Seeing anything?
I have not.
Neither. Okay, so there's no other comment? Yes, Mr. Bailey?
Uh, yeah, will you entertain a motion?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this until our next meeting, and I don't have that date.
September twelfth.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this till September twelfth, to allow our department heads and ourselves to review the information.
Motion on the floor?
I second it.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no, maybe we rebuttal if you guys want to reconsider something. Because we're, we're at what, September, August eight right now? And September twelfth is the next meeting? I mean, not for nothing, I know the building world somewhat, right? They think I got a good idea on it. And, you know, going into winter, all of that, that could change up their budget really quick. Maybe if we can have Chief Walk, or, or Chief Walker review, and then get back to us. And, you know, depending on, you know, what he says, you know, and if we can speed this up prior to the next meeting. I mean, I think that would be the, the better avenue.
Motion on the floor?
Okay.
I move the motion.
Yeah. Okay, we'll vote individually, Mr. Gibson? Motion is to.
To lay it, is that what?
To the original first motion, that's, that's what I would say yes to.
Me too, I just don't see an option for doing.
Yes, yes, no.
Scotia, no.
Bailey, yes.
I'll vote yes to, go, part of one, the motion carries. So we'll need to get further information on this.
I would, I would ask that Ms. Cottle make a note that I didn't receive. I know it's not from you, but I didn't receive a complete package of all the drawings. If you could ensure I get them for the next time, I'd appreciate it.
All right. Before we move on, Mr. Chair, I just want to be clear that the only additional information the select board's looking for is to have the department heads have an opportunity to review the additional information that was provided. You're not looking for anything additional from the applicant, correct?
Until we find out what the, what the department head say, we may have further questions, depending on what they say.
I mean, if you could come up with a, a figure for sweat equity, that might help somewhat.
Yes. About ten percent, but take a difference. All right, thank you very much, thanks. Require? Motion on the consent agenda?
I, I would move that we vote on the consent agenda on issues A through G.
Very good.
Second.
A through Z or A through F?
A through G.
G, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Yes.
Capio, aye.
I can. Favor, all in favor of say aye, all opposed say nay.
Aye.
Unanimous consent?
Yes, I will consent to that.
Very good. Appointments, I think you have it in your packet, this is the second reading. Jack Gale, the trustee of the trust fund. Replace retired member of the retired trustee, the RSA six-six-nine colon seven-three. So the trust fund should be filled by appointment made by the board selection for the remainder of the unexpired term, which is set to expire in March two thousand twenty-four. Have a motion.
I will make that motion that we appoint Mr. Jack Gale to the remaining term for the trustee of the trust funds. Trust funds, yes.
I second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously decided.
I'd like to also take this opportunity to thank Mr. Jack Gale for volunteering to fulfill his position. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. The clerk will be in touch. Staff reports include August work anniversary.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I interrupt you for a two minute stay, so I can get some water and bring some to anybody else that wants it?
Okay. Recession for two minutes?
Thank you.
A fast two minutes.
So I'm gonna hand it to you. I thought that was the way to get rid of.
I was gonna say something else, but I'm so hot, I don't know how you guys. Are you guys gonna go to that, Good Governance? I went to it for the last two years, and it's fantastic, I'm signed up. It's new stuff every year, it's really, really amazing.
Is that, it's on Zoom, right?
Yeah, it's all virtual, it's at night.
Two hours.
You don't have to have your camera on, there's, it's not participant necessarily. You could ask a question, but it's usually via chat. There's certain, it may be, you put in like six, six hours into it, but it was really, really.
Oh, good to have.
Thank you.
Sign up for it, yeah, so.
Butter and ice.
Is that different from the election trainings?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, and it's, I learned a lot about, like, truly learned a lot about what, like, the support does and how.
Will you be joining us Wednesday morning?
Difference between coming from somewhere in the town.
He does solar, I do wind.
As I said initially.
You guys are excited, I thought it would be really great, and if you don't, I'm kind of.
Thanks, Carrie.
Apologize.
I recognize.
I just wonder about this next only board meeting in this room.
I hope not.
Hopefully.
Yes, it is.
Hopefully, it will be our last meeting.
I know, eighty degrees, we're putting a playground, that's a shelter building thing.
Oh, no, well, my.
Ready? They're on back in business, we'll resume the meeting. Staff report, Mr. McIver, do you want to do it, or shall I? I'd be happy to do it.
No, I appreciate it, I'll get through what I can. The, start with the August work anniversaries, here we are, the first meeting in August. A healthy list today, Richard Conway, former police chief and current recreation site supervisor, has worked for the town for thirty-five years now. Tremendous tenure, and has impacted people of, for decades, obviously, as a supervisor. And now with our young, the youngest among us. Michael Bayer, EMS for twelve years, Keith Brody, Fire Department for eleven years. Patrice Lindsey, currently takes minutes for the Conservation Commission for ten years. Michelle Libby, one of our police officers for six years. Amanda Noyes, the building, currently the building and assessing administrative assistant for five years. Shane Elliott, in the Highway Department for five years. Jamison Young, started in the Police Department four years ago. I started four years ago. Our esteemed road agent started three years ago this month. And Cameron Jesse Cole started in the Fire Department a year ago. So certainly appreciate the continued tenure of those employees. In my staff report, I also included some other information for your benefit. I'm happy to answer questions. The first category is additional state funding to municipalities that came out of the legislature. Hundred and ninety-one thousand for roads, a hundred and forty-six thousand for bridges, and some additional reimbursed funds for New Hampshire, excuse me, New Hampshire Retirement Contribution. The next category, or the next item, is some details about the Academy for Good Governance, which NHMA puts on. It's a great program geared specifically towards select board members, school board members, and it covers all topics of governance. And this year, it's all virtual, so it's, you know, there's an ease to attending. Previously, you'd have to travel for the classes. I included the details in the schedule, you can certainly sign up on your own. But if you would like assistance signing up, I'm happy to help you. I guess I can pause if anybody has questions about those items yet.
Is there a fee for that signup?
No. No, sir, it's free.
Free ninety-nine.
Thank you.
Free ninety-nine, okay.
The additional, Connor, the additional monies that will be coming in for roads and bridges? Do you have a plan of how that money will be assigned?
Yeah, so there'll be decisions for the select board, I glossed over that, my apologies. The, at a future meeting, likely the September twelfth meeting, the select board will have to hold a public hearing and pursue it to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B. The, we couldn't do it this session because you have to have it noticed in the paper seven days in advance, and we didn't know about it until then, so. But at that meeting also, the select board will have to make a couple of decisions. Basically, whether we treat it as anticipated or unanticipated revenue. There are different requirements with both funding sources. And I'll have a more, more complete proposal for the select board to consider at that meeting, to make an informed decision. But we expect that these funds will be very, very helpful in advancing some of the necessary capital projects in the Highway Department. You remember when we talked about the pavement management plan? That didn't address the capital items that we needed, replacing culverts, you rehabilitating roads, things like that. And so, th- these funds will help us address some of those challenges earlier than we would have expected just raising money through taxation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Radio upgrades, I just wanted to make sure that this stayed in, in all of your minds. So in January, the select board authorized radio improvements. The, these things take time, not just because of supply chain delays, but mostly these delays are related to frequency acquisition, or in a pretty frequency dense part of the state. And so, securing the frequencies necessary to make the improvements that we want have taken time, but all things are still looking good. We've secured one of the frequencies and are close with the other. Most of the equipment is in and is ready to be installed. And so, our goal of having the new Highway Department Barrington Local repeater online before winter still looks like we're on track for that. And separately, the Police Department is also reviewing prices to purchase new radios through a Stratford County contract. Finally, we received the second half of the ARPA funds, that was expected. They, they separated it up into two, two payments, probably for cash flow reasons, not sure. But we received the second tranche of that, and the, we'll continue the conversation about utilizing those funds, we have time. That's all, thank you.
This is a really good report, you have a lot of money coming in to the town.
Yes. Yes.
It's a good thing you're married.
Yeah, not sure.
None of mine.
Ms. Cottle?
Just a couple of things, private reference for Mantrack sign, that'll be coming digitally. And then another digital signature will be for each of you for the appointment for Mr. Gale.
Thank you. Okay, all business. Boy retention bonuses. Are we ready for this discussion? If you had a chance to read over. If you had a chance to read over a, a possible recommendation.
Yes.
Says up to $250,000, right?
That's correct. I think that's of the 250 to 900 and some.
What departments does this include?
So we're talking, we're talking a quarter of all opera funds, correct?
What it looks like.
So then we have to add another 70 on there, right, for what we've already?
That's already gone.
Right, so how much is really left of the ARPA fund?
I think about $700,000.
Does that include the 250 we just received?
Well, and then Anand said that was going to be closer to three. So there's 370 right there.
We had 900 and something.
We have almost, almost a million, 900 and some thousand, so 300 and I think we'll have around 650 to 700,000 dollars left.
What does everybody think? What does everybody feel? I mean, we could sit here and be quiet all we want, but I mean.
No, I just, I asked a question. What departments is this include?
I believe it's for everybody.
Everybody across the board.
Includes the library also?
That is a, an important question, but I think so.
Yes, the language that's proposed would include the library.
Thank you.
This is all full-time employees, correct?
Our time of.
I think it has a provision for.
Proportionately.
It'll be proportional for the part-time employee.
There is a cost in losing personnel. A very, with each department, how much it costs when someone leaves and then you have to spend time hiring and onboarding that person. So there is some money to be saved if we keep our town employees.
I think, I think, in fairness, we have gone with police department in fairness to the rest of our employees who have served diligently and are still serving diligently and working hard. But in fairness, we should compensate them the same way.
I agree. I agree we should do that. I'd like to have the honor to make the motion. Anybody in the board of?
I'm not done discussing.
Although you can make the motion, we can discuss the motion, but that's okay. Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
I'll make the motion.
Make a motion to appropriate up to $250,000 from the ARPA funds for a one-time discretionary retention bonus as presented. As presented includes section three, paragraph one of the town administrator's report.
I'd like to second that.
Good, then move in second. Now discussion, go ahead, Jim.
So here's where I make tons of friends here, being, being the lonely voice here. But this all started when Chief Joy came in and delivered for his department, you know, he saw a need. Whether it was him working with the union or union working with him, he came, noticed a problem in his department, seen what's going on, presented this to us. And then, you know, we had a couple of people approach us afterwards saying, well, you guys messed up and, you know, you sold us out. But, you know, nobody said that those department heads didn't have the opportunity to come say, hey, you know, we, we see it rising, guys are getting ready to go and whatnot. I mean, do I think 5,000 across the board for everybody, all full-time employees? Is that the same as? You know, I, I think it could be divvied out differently. I'm not ready to move on it, so.
Thank you very much. As, as, as I stated before on this motion that I made is the fact that we were faced with a dilemma at the time when the police came here of the fact of surrounding areas, we were in excess of 31 individuals needed for the police department. And we had the opportunity, as it was suggested and/or as laid out to us, that we only had a couple there and we might have some difficulty. And because of public safety is the reason why I pushed so hard to have this. And then afterwards, when this is all over with, we had other department heads come before us, which I accept and agree they should. Gave us reasons for them also why we skipped them, but we skipped them because I really feel like I was caught off guard, but anyway, I felt public health, public safety rather was there. So now we're looking at this other group, other full-time employees, but I remind you that we lost two clerical people. They went to Boston. What the hell are they gonna do to Boston? You go, then you're gonna drive there? Then you gotta pay for parking if they got paid for, you know, we can't take the chance of hurting the town. And that's the reason why I'm pushing this right here. Thank you for listening.
Have we gotten back our, our study on wages?
Not yet, that.
I mean, I definitely think there, you know, it could be some more time where we might be able to use these ARPA funds just a little bit differently. And, you know, maybe do something that's a little bit more long-term instead of just a short-term cash dump. And then, you know, anything that comes up, because when do we have, till 2024?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six has been all the ARPA funds and, you know, we're nearly halfway through it in the first year.
You, yeah. Mr. Secosha, I'm telling you, you, we can't just turn around and do one group, but everybody put into it. I mean, do you, that, that's how I say to you, you know, we're, have a discussion here. I just feel that we need to show our appreciation. It's not just from the, from the five of us sitting here, but it's also for the other members of the town where somebody can drive down the road or somebody can turn around and have an accident and then the EMS comes out and helps. I mean, we have people here that are trained. We, we're not losing them. So I, I just, I feel that we need to appreciate what we have. Because it sure is a big hole where we gotta turn around and cry and say, oh, we lost. Right now, we have a chance to save what we have, and I think we should respect the requests of the department heads and do it.
So to, I don't know, I, I look at this, you know, get it not confused. I appreciate everybody and what they do for their job, and I see the true values of each portion of it. But it's just, it's a little too soon without seeing the analysts that's coming through, because let's go ahead, let's, let's dump out this $5,000 bonus. And then we get our, our.
Compensation.
Compensation back, our report back and go, well, now we gotta bump up people $10 an hour. Where are we gonna get funds for that?
We may, we may need to do that. We may need to do that anyway for the next budget cycle, but it'll be interesting to see what that informs. This, I think, is separate from, from the, this is, this is a separate deal from what is a reasonable compensation to people.
Well, then you're gonna go in because, you know, if this is gonna go inner, inner department too, you know, which was mentioned in the last meeting, oh, now you're gonna cause a feud between us. So what's to say that it's still not gonna cause a feud with somebody who picks up a shovel to somebody who slides some paperwork down, down the desk being like, well, they got the same amount as I and, and I do physical labor. So, I mean, damned if you do, damned if you don't, but, you know, you gotta hear that side. It's gonna be spoken, whether people like to hear it or not.
I agree with you. I agree with you, but it's still, you know. I've been, I've been around for, for a long time and I've seen this board mistreat, not this board, please understand, but the select board. Back in '02, when, when I first started and here now and then. I've watched some of the decisions made that really hurt some of our employees. It really has. And I look at it this way from my point personally, here is a way that we can say, thank you for sticking this out for, and here it is here. I mean, I, I agree with you. If it was a different time and a different, I, I would, I would go with you. But right now, I just can't. I made my motion and I had it seconded and we have a discussion going on now and I just, I would like to see it move forward and everybody else would be compensated once, because the compensation study is gonna show us what we have to show for an hourly wage. You know. I anticipate getting really kicked with it. And we're gonna have to really figure out how we're gonna make it work at the same time, because that 1950 we're charging now or getting compensated for sure looks good, but if we have to change it, we're gonna have to make people aware of it.
Thank you. I was just.
Jim.
I was just gonna say.
Speak first, thank you.
Jim, the, the ARPA funds, you know, right along, I've been wanting to make sure that we use those funds prudently. And I think that in our last meeting, we talked about putting together a group to kind of discuss uses for the ARPA funds. So I think being, using them wisely is very important. I, I do think that this is a, a good use of them. You're right that it brings it down about a quarter. But, you know, I know when I was running for select board, one of the things that I said was, was, and that I wanted to advocate for was, you know, fair compensation in support of our, our employees. And when we think about all the things we can spend the ARPA funds on, at the end of the day, it is the people of our town that, that run and get all of this done. And they have to be our, our top priority. And that still saves three quarters of the ARPA funds that we can use for a variety of things.
To rebuttal to that, let's talk about it. Seventy thousand's already gone and we're gonna have to appropriate close to another 300,000. So that, that cuts the ARPA fund really down by almost half, not a quarter. And just to be clear, I do want people compensated for their time and what they do. And, you know, I'm not saying that, no, nobody else gets a bonus. That, that's not my way. I just think there's a different strategy that we could take with this and, I don't know. It's just one of five.
Okay, any other, any other discussion? Only one who hadn't spoken recently is Ms. Capella.
I think that it's, it actually is a long-term investment in the town of Barrington, because if we can keep seasoned people, that's a good thing. I mean, it's a good thing in continuity of services. It's also, you know, a good economic decision, I think. Because when we, when we have a rotating group of staff people, there's a lot, a lot of money spent on training and probably not the same level of services.
So is there, is there a statute in place or something that we can say, you know, we go ahead and give everybody $5,000? And then somebody goes, well, screw that. I'm going over to Samper DPW, you know, they're gonna pay me more. I'm gonna get my five grand. See you later, bye. And then, then how are we stuck with it? You know what I mean? Where's the long-term goal?
It's certainly a risk that we can't anticipate, but I think what we have heard and what seems to me to be fair is that most of our employees who, I think, as a group like our town and like to work, I think, showing this appreciation to them is only going to encourage them to stay. Can't guarantee it, but I think it will encourage them to say, stay. Not so much for the dollar value, but the fact that we do value them as employees of our, of our town and the service they provide for our town. Personal opinion. Anyone else? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the motion.
Okay. Motion has been made, seconded. Shall we do it by, by person? Mr. Gibson?
Aye.
Capella, aye.
Secosha, no.
Bailey, aye.
Mantrick, aye? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, petition special town meeting. Again, to reiterate, procedure special town meeting will starting with the deliberative session Saturday, 20th of August at the middle school. And then the ballot session as required by the, by law will be the 18th of, Tuesday, the 18th of October. With ballots being, or with the voting occurring at the new town hall. This will allow the, the school to stay in session that day. They're already gonna be out three times for elections as it is, so. Do that, there is a a website which is sharing, answering frequently asked questions. Is there any other? Mr. Bailey?
Please, please note the time that on the 20th, that starts at 9:00 AM.
Correct.
And voting goes from
Eight to seven.
Eight to seven, thank you. I didn't have that one here.
Chairman, do you need us there early for any preparations or any work?
That'll be pretty much up to Mr. St. Jean, who
Okay.
will be running the deliberative session, but I anticipate we'll all be there on time.
Can do.
Okay. New business. Public safety building generator study. I think we've, we've already discussed that at some length. But we need to have authorization to use the incident fund to do that. Are there any, any questions or concerns?
Is that going?
Go ahead.
Are we gonna be using that for emergencies also if we had to provide showers and water and what have you? I'm just asking generally open, I'm trying to put it part of the motion.
No, no, I think it's, I think a lot of it is, is for an emergency, for emergency purposes.
So then you answer my question, all right.
Whoever needs to get plugged into electrons.
So right now, it's not on, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not on automatic. They have to go out, once power goes out, start up the generator and then manually transfer it. This would propose with the growth and future growth that they'll have at their building with the proper sized generator to perform as business as usual during an emergency situation.
And I, and I think the study is also going to look more than just today's needs. It's gonna try to anticipate future needs. Probably will increase over time.
One of the questions I have here after reading it, this is from CSI engineering that I'm speaking of. What about a service contract with, with this generator going in there? Is that gonna be something we're gonna be looking at or what?
So pretty much with what we're gonna get out of the CSI, CSI engineering statement is something for them to go request for a quote. And it'll go out, be public. People will know what size generator they have to put in. If the town has a certain one that they wanna use, they can do that by then and identify if they wanna go Generac, Kohler, what have you. But this is just simply to do all the nuts and bolts research for what we need for the now and for the future so that we can get it out, get a bid, and then that would come before, before the board.
Basically, the specification is what we need. We don't know exactly what we need.
All right, so then, so then the construction administration to rebuild hourly over on page, I think it's one, two, three. So how would, how would that work out? Does that include the platform and everything else to be put on? Because.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bailey, I'm just gonna say that those are optional services that aren't included in the current scope. So once we have the report which select person Secosha detailed and identify a supplier and contractor to install the generator, it would be the town's option whether to use CSI engineers to do construction administration. And that would be a separate decision to the select board. That's not included in the current scope. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I thank you, Jim, for being part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Gibson, question for Connor. Where are we around the town with other generators, like the safety complex and other places? Is there a bargaining advantage to have a study that's looking at all of our backup generator needs? Or are those kind of all new and good?
That's a good question. So the, the town hall is being addressed through the construction project. We have a $75,000 grant as a primary emergency operations center, so that one's all set. The, we're currently in progress of a grant for the recreation library building because of the communication tower there. It's a competitive grant, but we were, the, it's the same funding program that got the generator for the new town hall. So hopefully we'll be able to secure funds for that next year. And then I can't speak intelligently about the. And then I can't speak intelligently about the generator at the highway garage. If there are benefits to engineer any backup generator there. But maybe Mark or somebody could speak to that, but I understand your point.
Mark, would you like to speak to that?
The highway button generator is about five hundred volts.
Yeah, yeah, I don't.
Not any million.
There hasn't been too much groundbreaking on generators.
Could you speak up so everyone, so the other people can hear that aren't here?
Yeah, don't take that. Yeah, I'm just gonna, uh. Said I'll recuse myself on the vote. Hear you.
Yeah, about the generator for the highway, I just, I just want to make sure everyone could hear you.
Okay.
But people are online.
So the, the generator at the highway department, it's, it's automatic kick on when the power goes out, it comes on. We just had that fixed, that hadn't been working for a while. It will run fuel pumps, building heat. Lights, some lights, will not run anything at the transfer station, no compacters, I don't even think it runs lights over there. Is it capable of carrying that extra load? I don't know. Chief Walker, do you know if it runs the back building?
Do you have a? I don't study off my head.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's, well, not for that building, but that's what CSI is going to perform.
Right. Okay.
For there.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, okay, good.
I just, I hate to make you move, but like, like.
Thanks, Mark.
Listening at home. Mr. Gibson.
Was CSI the, the firm that was doing the feasibility study for the expansion of the police department?
No, separate, CMA engineers, the town's engineer record is doing the feasibility study. This, these are separate specialized electrical engineers.
So I assume though, they're all in the same, I mean, that they would be aware of the possibility of expanding in the police department and all of that as well as part of their study?
Yep, absolutely. In preparation for their scope and fee, we met with them on site and have followed up with details regarding what a future expansion could look like. Current utility utilization, things like that. And so, yes, they, they would continue to work with the best information from CMA as well.
Any other questions? Can we have a motion to authorize or do you think we don't want to do this? Okay, we have.
Well, seems like we probably should.
Yep.
I'll move that we authorize a seven thousand dollars to do an engineering study for the generator.
Okay, utilizing incident funds.
Yes, utilizing incident.
I will second that, please.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion?
No, I just hope that as I spoke to Jim Secoshia about it, Mr. Secoshia, forgive me. I'd just like to make sure that we use an ABT on all of these generators. Automatic bus transfer.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Very good, understand. Understand, okay. Municipal solar opportunities, if anyone has a chance to read this, uh, article from NH, NHMA referencing, uh, Hampshire Town City Solar Energy Programs. There are controversies, there are pluses and minuses to these things, but I think it's something we might want to at least look at because there quite a bit of money involved. There are some state monies that are available for this.
And it looks like there could be federal monies.
I think there probably are some federal money.
This year.
This year.
Maybe by the weekend.
I would need you here to do it then.
Well, no, in my travels in the solar industry and, you know, I don't like how this has surfaced, but because it'll put people on that pressure point of whether, you know, if they make the decision on to get solar this year or next. But rumor, you know, what's in the rumor mill is saying that there might not be any federal money next year, so.
That seems, seems quite possible.
So it seems to me that would be helpful for the town to have a plan. So if there is some money that comes in, we're kind of ready to make use of it, if it makes sense for us.
But how does, how does this play? And I, and I didn't read this article, I just was at the end, so I let it go. But how's this going to play with the, uh, the state? And the state says they, they had so much money and they've changed some of the solar bylaws and what have you. How's that going to affect this? Is it, is that going to be in this article?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what the article is based on is, is.
But the state, the state and money.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Check it out. But the proposal is to have a committee that puts together to look at this in more detail. I've read the article two or three times, I'm not sure I understand it either, but it would be useful to have. Something about it to discuss, not just, not just select board, maybe the technology committee and, uh.
I'll be here if they have questions, but once again, that's probably something that I would want to recuse myself from again.
Sure.
To, you know, because what's important to me is, you know, I'm a hometown kid, born and raised. And if I have the opportunity to help my community by building it and making it more efficient and sustainable, I'm there. But you know, if a committee is formed and they have questions and want to run them by and, you know, if they need sources, I know a guy.
Yeah, I know you too.
Know a guy, okay. I would propose we go to the technology committee and see if we can put together a committee to discuss this, would that be?
So why would you go to the technology committee versus just setting up an energy committee?
I agree.
I, I just feel like the technology committee seems pretty overwhelmed right now with looking at bringing fiber into the community. So I wonder what their bandwidth is for doing this.
Oh, that's a good point, but who would you propose to be on this committee, I guess is the question.
That I don't know.
I think if you put out like a public announcement, I think there's, there's quite a few individuals in town that I know that are really involved in, in energy efficiency and alternative energies for the state and region.
Connor, could you give us a little history of how the technology committee was formed and how people were selected to be on that committee?
Yes, I can, and I completely agree. I think I would propose a separate committee with a separate charge. Any ad hoc advisory committee of the select board is created out of a need. The select board is looking to be advised on some topic. The technology committee was formed in order to help advise the select board on the acquisition, update of certain technology, hardware, software, et cetera. The, you know, I, I think the energy committee, an energy committee, municipal energy committee is a pretty well established, there's a model for it, you know, kind of across the state. A lot of communities have energy committees and they, they focus on different things at different times. But if the select board is interested in reviewing some level of community solar, the primary charge of an energy committee starting out could be to focus on municipal solar. And yeah, I would absolutely agree with what select person Gibson says. And we put a blast out online and say, hey, if you're interested in joining a newly formed energy committee, submit your application for appointment and the select board will start reviewing those for their September or October meeting. And in between now and then, the, we can have a more formal charge of what the, the formation of the new committee would look like. That process makes sense?
Actually sounds reasonable.
It is reasonable.
I would just say, let's move it along, let's put out a word now and have some discussion at our September meeting. Because we would have to acknowledge and review at September meeting and then vote at October meeting, so.
Yeah, get it rolling.
Yeah.
Sounds. Can do.
So maybe the select board would take a vote to create an energy committee and solicit applications to be due by the Wednesday before September twelfth, which is September seventh. You say so moved.
That's very good.
So moved. Alright, you go.
So that's going to be for solar?
It's going to be energy, because it's going to, it's going to involve insulation, heating, cooling, lighting.
Any number.
Anything to do with energy.
Just want to make sure, sometimes we get tired of self up, okay.
Well, no, if we, if we have some good HVAC guys out there in the community that want to hop on board and, you know, there's definitely plenty of air conditioning issues since the room we're sitting in is a balmy eighty-five degrees, so.
A hundred percent.
Oh, you guys, come on.
We're only.
The balmy.
Going to take a shower.
And I've always heard wind is not an option in Barrington, but if somebody can prove me wrong, we can talk about that.
I would, I would say wind, I mean, unless it really upgraded over the last couple of years, but windmills are generally, unless they're out on the ocean, they're like thirty percent efficient, so.
Joyce, we could say hot air too. We generate a lot.
Yeah, we'll save this for the winter.
Come to, come to a board meeting.
Yeah.
Be good. Okay. We've moved that all eventually. Objection is so ordered. Committee reports, Mr. Capiello.
Probably were going to add this to the classics.
I'm sorry, Jim, I apologize, I thought we'd started that discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, um, guys, I mean, we're seeing this come into the board more frequent. I mean, we had two applicants tonight about the classics, private road policy. You know, I would like Mark, maybe, you know, if you feel comfortable talking tonight. Just, just some points that, that, you know, we can get to a common ground where it's not so polarized, if that's possible. You know what I mean? To, to help out the community because, you know, you got these builds, uh, you know, materials are out of sight, labor costs are up. So you have somebody going in, doing a rebuild for three hundred thousand and then we're asking them to put ten percent of that down on the road and some of the roads don't even allow that. So, you know, it's, it's not working. And I think that we need time to maybe get creative with our department staffs and, and come up with, with a better solution, if there is one. Because otherwise, these things are just going to keep coming to us.
Are you thinking the ten percent figure should be adjusted?
I think that would definitely help because, you know, granted, some of these people, I mean, this guy, he was talking about the ortho tonight, you know what I mean? He obviously has some physical challenges, so I mean, you know, the guy wants to get his house ADA compliant so that he can act pretty just like any other American. And, you know, putting a strain on somebody like that, probably not working. You know, it's sweat equity, you know, how much can he physically do? You know, it's just, it needs to be a better conversation somewhere.
I have a question, have you had discussion, prior discussion with that individual?
No.
Okay, because I didn't hear ADA mentioned on the presentation from the gentleman.
He had mentioned his orthopedic. And I, I actually saw the general contractor helped him up out of his seat.
Yeah, but we, this was passed back in May of twenty twenty. And we passed it for a specific reason because there wasn't enough bite in it to get these class six private roads brought up to, uh, higher standards. So we can allow people to go to that. So I just caution everybody, just jumping in there now and going from ten percent to whatever percentage you might decide to do, it's just going to take away with the road construction that's going to provide safety for other people. Because right now, some of these areas they're living in, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, some people wouldn't be caught dead. Well, now, how many houses do we have for sale in Barrington? We got damn few, we got some lots, but I think that we need to consider very carefully how we reduce the road repair money. That's my opinion. I, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Secoshia, when you say, then you got to help people out, you know? But everybody right now is, they're strapped to everything else. When you turn around, you go to the store, you try to buy a loaf of bread. I mean, it's, it's just a statement of how the cost of everything is going to, along with the building material. And not only that, you got to have, uh, fuel and whatever to get to it, to keep it warm and air condition it. Thank you.
Yeah, again, again, the purpose of this agreement was to improve the roads. And so we may want to consider and tweak it, but I, I'm not seeing the roads getting improved significantly. Because we're granting, we're, we're granting access to a lot of these places that are very difficult to get in and, and to the point of being dangerous to get into. And people pay their money and takes their chances in some of these places, but the fire department, the EMS are going to go in there regardless of what the road looks like, at some risk to themselves and certainly to their equipment. And I think that's part of the, that's part of the consideration of this agreement.
Well, to echo off what you said, but not only that, but other, other people in the town. Because, you know, if you go barreling down one of these roads and somebody gets a, a fire truck stuck or whatnot and then there's a fire somewhere else in town and we can't get out, I mean, that's affected as well. You know, every, can I ask a question to Connor? I mean, when's the last time we drew a hard no in the sand for somebody coming, coming here and said, no, you got to pay that ten percent?
Uh, well, the policy hasn't existed very long, I think there's only been four applications since the policy was changed.
And we've granted everyone, correct?
Well, at least one of those, I think the people paid the ten percent without question.
Right.
At least one of them.
But the ten percent wasn't meant to be a fine, it wasn't to be punitive, it was to take a certain amount of money to improving, improving the roads. And we realized that in many cases, you can't improve the whole road. But if you could improve the road to ten percent of, of the cost of your, of your house, then that would improve the roads gradually over time, not saying you don't, we don't like your road, so we're going to fine you if, if, uh, ten percent of the cost of your house. The idea was that that seemed a reasonable amount of money to make whatever improvements they could, even though the whole road couldn't get improved.
So with that, you know, in certain situations, because you know, it's not every road's the same road and not every road's the same size, you know, same material and whatnot, but I, I find it even at that ten percent, you're, you're in the middle of a borderline going from a capital project to, you know, a minor, you know, to update the road and try and get it passable and safe in case of emergency. But I, you know, just, I don't know if we can do this or whatnot, but, you know, I would, I would like to see something like, hey, you know, these guys are building down Lindsay Point Road, let's run this by our highway department. If he had the opportunity, what would he do to make the road safe? And then, you know, there's portions of that project and then we can present that to the people being like, this is the recommendation by our, our, our road agent. So, you know, we know that you can't afford this hundred thousand dollar, you know, paving it, but, you know, you might be able to gravel the shoulders, gain some twenty feet and, you know, see what the best situation is. But I'm, once again, I'm not sure if we're allowed to do that.
The, sure, thank you. The original, uh, classics building, uh, rules and regulations were set up by a board that I sat on and the chief was here with me. We, we set that in place so we could turn around and be able to protect the boundaries in some of the cases, some of the roads and what have you. But it was always passed on. And somewhere along the line, somewhere eighteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, and twenty, we, we sat down and we talked about not having safe roads. And so all of us that were on the board at that time, sat down and figured it out that we wanted to do certain things because we knew that the road construction wasn't doing it, Jim. And it, I, I would like to recommend or ask somebody to, to say that we take this back and we, we write down things that we would like to see changed and then, and then we all can turn around and sit down, Mr. Chairman. changed, and then and then we all can turn around and sit down, Mr. Chairman, and sit down with our sheet and see if we can change it. But we do know we have to protect, get the roads up to date, and and if it means going from ten percent to eight percent, or going to five, or not touching changing at all, I but at least all of us would have a chance to take this and write down everything we need. And I don't know if Tiffany could turn around and send us all a copy of it, that we can just put it in Word or however it comes out, and work on the side, and then we can turn around and have our notes and anything else with it.
I think that's great. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
I'd also like to hear, Mark, you would like to speak?
So a good part of the frustration with this is every one of these is going to turn into a waiver. As you've probably noticed already, the few that have been processed since this whole thing came to a head, every single one of them
It's trending.
is going to be a waiver. And by human nature, you know, the ten percent rule, if money's money, people are people, people don't like spending money they don't want to spend. So they're constantly going to be trying to squeeze the ten percent. And, you know, we've we've seen it happen here. We've, you know, we've done it on numerous occasions. And from a legal standpoint, I don't know where that puts us. I don't know if it can be looked at as discrimination if one guy gets to slide by with five percent while another one gets held to ten percent. Don't know, not a lawyer. But it's just, it's it's a just a very awkward, cumbersome process for everybody involved. You guys are going to spend your entire lives processing waivers in its in its current state. Do I have a do I have an answer for this? No.
Oh, I was waiting for you to come up with an answer.
Why not?
No, but it's 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 very frustrating for everybody involved, for for me, the chief, for the for you guys, and for the people that are doing it. And I I don't know of another way. I know public safety's, you know, the the access for the for the fire equipment, I know that's paramount. In the chief's decision on, you know, he that's why he rides a hard line on this stuff. I mean, the rules, the rules, the rule. But there's so many places in this town that that rule cannot be abided by, such as Rocky Point, the one that was put before us tonight. In order to enforce that rule, you'd have to take a ton of people's private property just just to just to get the town sixteen foot wide with two foot shoulders on each side. You'd have to take a lot of people's property. The place wouldn't even look the same when you had done. So I just, there's a lot of frustration here. I mean, I I've had my I've had my moments with it. Chief has, I know, we commiserate. It's just a very awkward. There's there's got to be something different. The the amount of feelings that get riled up in the process of this is.
Well, of course. I mean, you you get a, you know, it's a new couple coming in and want to renovate or whatever, and, you know, they get a they get a bank loan for for four hundred grand. That's it. You know, they don't get it for four hundred and forty.
Right, right. And the 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 bank is not going to consider that extra ten percent as loanable.
They got.
So where's that going to come from? So it's it's just a it's a sticky with sure.
I I think your suggestion that Mark go out and then come up with suggestions, wow, sounds neat and tidy. I'm not sure that's I'm not sure that's your job. Basically engineer projects for people. I don't think we want that. I think we should insist that the builder come up with some sort of plan. But again, we're still going to have this frustration like the one road, where there isn't anything, you know, they've done everything they can, it's still not
Right.
still not enough. Make it standard is better, at least in that in that first case, certainly better than it was, but it's not perfect.
Yeah.
I don't think we expected when we made this policy that we'd make every road perfect, that, again, the ten percent was to do as much as you could with ten percent of the cost. So, Mr. Scotia.
So, you know, not re-engineering, and I'm not trying to put a flat spot in the wheel, and or any more unnecessary work on both of your tables, but something that I could see that would be fair, and, you know, for instance, you know, Dwayne or Unified Builders, you know, they had a nice map. You know, this helped huge. You know, this showed, you know, existing to where they want to go, whatnot. I mean, if one of these came to you, you know what I mean, would it be too much to go, all right, well, I could take a spin down, I got the map here, I can highlight this area, you know, you could widen the road here is yellow, tree work here is green, and and just something quite very basic to give them, go, hey, here's areas on that road that you need to improve, or I would improve first. Why don't you make us a plan? They make us a plan, then it gets reviewed by the fire chief, see if he's mobile down there, and any suggestions that he has.
But but then we're still stuck with trying to uphold the town standard for that road.
So what is the town standard?
The town standard is sixteen feet wide with two foot shoulders. That's 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 what I have to go out there and say, yep, they can do it, no, they can't, or or no, no, it doesn't exist that way at its present time. That's what I go out there for. And the and the same with the chief.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you. I'm going to do it again to you, Jim. If people want to come here and live in Barrington, what what are we, the fifth, we got the best, the third place schools or some, I mean, if they want to come here and enjoy what we've already have, then they should be able to pay for what they want to have. If they can't pay for what they have, then they should look at downsizing the size of the house so that they could turn around and put less into the road. That's the only alternative I can see for it.
So you're going to tell me that the, you know, the guy who's, you know, needs to not not even who who came tonight, just a supportive example, wants to upgrade his house, get it redone, ADA compliance, doesn't have a lot of money, but, you know, hey, I'm going to take the rest out of my my retirement and live and go, hey, bud, you can't afford the road, you better sell your house and build elsewhere.
That's that's not really what's happened on these people. They come and they know what they're going to spend for a house.
Did we get any?
And and the contractor is got to work with it because the more the house costs, the more money the contractor can make. And God forbid, everybody needs to make a lot of money nowadays to survive. But we got to have same thing, road safety, you know. So I've said it enough times, so it's.
So if I may, part of the problem is, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
So one way I looked at the Rocky Point Road was those people have actually been putting a lot of money into that road because they paid that repaved it, and they've maintained it. And many of the roads we've been looking at, people haven't put that kind of money into it. They're narrow gravel rolls that could use some pretty basic grading and stuff. So that was one way I looked at that.
Big part of the problem is, especially since COVID, and that's when this whole thing really started to rear its ugly head. A lot of people came to this town and they're purchasing property that before would never ever have been thought about being built on, in places that they never would have thought of putting them, AKA class six roads. And I got to tell you, there's a lot of a lot of situations in this town that are going to develop that simply will not be able to meet that town standard, whether it be for topographical reasons, wetland reasons, they just won't be able to meet them. So here you go again, here's more waivers staring you right in the face coming down the road. It's not going to go away. This place is growing fast. And like I said, people are building out in the boonies. And there's a reason that these places have been the boonies for so long. It's because it's so difficult to to get to them because the roads are horrible, for good reason. They could never have been fixed before.
Chief Walker came up to speak.
I did.
Please.
It's important. It's frustrating to me that this policy was enacted in May, and you want to make a change already. And you can't compare Cottage Lane to Rocky Point. Cottage Lane is a dirt road, not well maintained, very narrow, very windy. The problem comes back to is is that nine times out of ten, you get a police cruiser in there because they're pretty small. And we most of the time can get an ambulance in there because they're pretty small. But if you look at the size of the fire trucks we're buying today, and we're trying to put these into some of these roads, that's a problem. So it really, a lot of times, the police chief goes, hey, if a fire truck can get there, I'm not going to worry about me getting there. But you five, the state law is very clear. You five decide what that road has to be like. You can leave it a cow path if you want, and say, we'll do the best we can to get in there with a fire truck. Or you can ask them to upgrade the thing so that a fire truck can get in there. But it but to stand there when you ask the department heads to go look at these things, and we tell you what we it was very clear that the the we made it very clear to the people on Cottage Lane what we needed to do. And there's been emails flying back and forth about, well, will you give a little here and give a little here, and we do this and we do that. That's not up to us. That's up to you five. That's what you guys are elected to do. You hired me as a fire chief to tell you what I need to get that six hundred and fifty or seven hundred thousand dollar fire truck in there when it needs to go in there. That's what you pay me to do. If you're not going to listen to what I do, what I say, that's perfectly fine. Let's cut out the middleman. Let's get the fire chief not to look at it. Let's get the police chief not to look at it. Let's get the road agent not to look at it. And you five decide what you want to do. It'll make our job that much easier. So if you want us to look at it, and you're going to take what our requests are seriously, or just eliminate us and do it yourselves. I'm not here asking somebody to spend fifty or sixty thousand dollars more to to get in there. What I'm asking for is for you guys to put something in place so I can get there if they need us.
I'm not I know there are lots of people want to move I'm not sure that we have to allow people to build places places that we can't support. They want town support, then there are places that we cannot do that.
The contractor on the on the job on Cottage Lane in my office, that that the individual that bought the land on Lindsey Point, let him cut any tree they wanted on that side. Now, obviously, he's changed his mind, but.
Not to not to get off topic here, but, you know, I I see an issue, and I don't know if this is something easily, you know, this would be right up your alley. You know, if we have all these small roads and we have this real big fire truck, I mean, maybe it might be worth looking at, you know, something, you know, a slimmer, smaller fire truck that, you know, it can go down those roads.
So so you can do that. But the problem is, is now you're making a custom piece of apparatus. So now, the a frontline engine, which we're due to replace in about three years, custom engine, right now, today's dollars, City of Rochester just purchased one with not a lot of what I would call bells and whistles on it, and they paid six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a frontline engine. My guess is that in twenty-four or twenty-five, that truck will be north of seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks. If you if you go to them and say, I want a smaller, custom-made truck to fit down these camp roads, you'll easily add fifty or sixty thousand dollars, because now they're making a special customized truck.
Might might be, sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Might might be worth, and I doubt that this is even possible legally, but, you know, even if we got five thousand dollars on each applicant down, you know, that that are going to go through on these builds, and we put it into account, you know, if we're going to do twenty of these things, that's going to add up real quick.
Well, look.
It's going to put us provisions to, you know.
But the problem with that is you only have a limited amount of time to spend that money. And that's a better question for the planning department, but I believe it's five years. So you got to have a plan in place to say we're getting ten thousand dollars for these roads every time, but we have to have a plan to say in five years, both of that number is that money gets spent. And if it doesn't get spent in that amount of time, then you have to give the person back the money that paid that.
Thank you. If I turned around and moved here and bought a house, five hundred thousand, we put on a certain lot, and then you turn around and you took my ten percent, my fifty grand, and you put it over here on Street X instead of the street that I paid the money for, boy, I would be bullshit. Excuse my language, everybody. But that's exactly what you you're saying. Right now, we say, pay pay the ten percent, we put the ten percent there, and they have a road association, or if they don't, we turn around and encourage them to have one, and we can get that work done. We just can't just turn around, collect money, and then just say, well, all right, change. It's the same thing like people are doing with our, mine. I won't go down that road. But we need to keep where it's going, so it'll work.
Part of part of the problem is, some of these places, no matter how much money you put into it, you you can't build it.
Yeah.
And and perhaps those are the places that we don't have building permits, because we can't provide safe, adequate services to those areas. Those are areas that we, as select board, I think, should say, I'm sorry, we can't give you a building permit on this lot because we we can't provide any services for you.
So then they're going to sit there and tell us, okay, well, if we're at our, you know, nineteen forties camp that, you know, we inherited from Grandma and Grandpa, and we're hanging there, and somebody has a heart attack, you're not going to send an ambulance down now? You you know what I mean? It's just, it it's not an easy subject by any means, but I just think it it needs work, and we could probably discuss this the rest of the night. But I wanted to get it out there. And I know it was in May, but, you know, obviously, you know, there are some things that we can work on to to make it a little bit better, at least in my eyes, my opinion.
You know, the as the chief said, you know, we can make changes, and you have to understand, the RSA allows us to say, no more building on X class six road, period. Boom. There are some towns in this state that say, no more building on class six roads, so private roads, class six private, boom, you're not allowed to build. And that's it. I mean, that's what they gave us the right, one of the few things they allowed us to do. And if we did that, wow, how many contractors do you think would lose money? How many people do you think would spend extra money just to have it be damned on fast? They want to come here, so we have to keep providing safety, you know?
The issue comes back to is exactly what
Yeah.
like President Bailey says, is it's it is a hundred percent your decision, and there are communities very close to the town of Barrington that border us that do not allow building on a class six road. The only way that you can get a building permit on that on a class six road is upgrade it to a class five standard. That gets pretty expensive. Again, if I can't say this anymore simply, it's your decision what to do. And and I will respect the fact that the five of you get to make that decision. And I'd be perfectly happy to dump a hundred percent of it on the laps of the five of you, and never ever look at a private road ever again, because we're the ones that are these people and saying, we want this, this, and this, and we're getting the brunt of that to begin with. And again, my job as a fire chief is to provide you folks, that I work for, proper information on what I believe it takes to get a fire truck to your house. I depend on the road agent to determine. You know, if Mike says to me, I'll, I'll put six loads of beach sand in there and widen that road out five feet, and I'm sitting there going, okay, and he's sitting there looking at me going, you can't put beach sand in there, there's going to be a fire truck in there. I don't build roads. If the road's on fire, I'll figure out how to put it out. But you pay this man to make sure the road's built adequately, and there's adequate drainage and coves and stuff like this. All I'm doing is going in and saying, I got this truck that's this size, and I got to get it in there and get it safely turned around.
So do you think our policy that we have in place right now is effective as is?
I do. I do. I don't, I don't think, I don't think it makes sense right now to make changes. I think you need to look at it, let it go for a while, let it ride the process a while, and then turn around if you see that it's because Mark's a hundred percent correct, and I, and I get that. You want to build yourself a five hundred thousand dollar house. And now you're being told that you're going to spend five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And some says it does force you to say, well, am I going to build a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house? Or am I going to build a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar house? But it's, it's very easy for you or I to stand there and say, you know what, if my house catches, I'm fine, you can't get here. It is what it is. If I'm having a heart attack, and I'm twenty years old, and chance that I'm not going to have a heart attack, you're standing there going, if I'm having a heart attack and you get, get to me, it is what it is. But when the emergency really does happen, and you need that fire truck, or heaven forbid, you need a police officer because somebody's in your house that shouldn't be there, or you need that ambulance. Everything you said five or ten years ago is out the window. Now I need that service. And understand this. We've never we'll always make an attempt to get somewhere, wherever we need to go. And the highway development has gone out and plowed roads, so we couldn't get there with an ambulance or a fire truck when we needed to. And there's going to be times with, like the windshield we had the other day, where it took trees down on either side, and the poor guy got stuck in the middle, and there was wires down, we couldn't do anything but go get him out of there and say, park your truck, and we'll get you home, and once Eversource comes in here. So in that particular case, we wouldn't have been able to get, there was a house that would have been isolated, we wouldn't have been able to get to it. But for the vast majority of the time, we'll get as close as we can. And then if we got to hike in there, we're going to hike in there. But purpose for this policy is to make sure that the town has made reasonable efforts to make sure we can get there. Some of these roads are nothing but glorified, unmaintained driveways. I can take you on some private roads in this town that are maintained as good as the roads that you and I pay as taxpayers to maintain. And, and that, and that's on the strength of the road association, much like Rocky Point, much like Micah Point, the road's narrow. But them, them folks down there spend a lot of money each year taking care of their road. Um, I some roads, little or no amount of money gets put into them.
Right. Okay. Just, uh.
One more thing.
Yeah, just one more thing. How many failed attempts have we had over the last thirty years getting to somebody?
Not many.
And then the only other thing I just want to put out there, so it's out there. You know, if we say no building on the class six road unless it's upgraded to a, a, a class five or what have you, you know, that's going to be a big punch in the face to the people that own those or whatnot, because that's going to affect their property value as well. So, once again, one of those damned if you do, damned if you don't.
But again, it goes right back to what I said at the beginning of this.
Oh, I'm just, I just wanted to put it out there. I wasn't going to talk about it anymore, but.
It one hundred percent rests on the shoulders of the five of you, and whatever you guys decide, I'll live with it for a couple more years.
So, a big part of the chief's frustration, him more than me, is you're paying him as a professional. So he is, I don't know if he's I'm going to use the word bound, not necessarily bound by law, but he's bound to uphold a certain fire code. So he goes out there, and he's, he's going to uphold that code by saying, no, this just doesn't work. Needs to be, needs to be upgraded and improved. So then the whole process starts. The people come before you, they plead their case, as they always do. And the, the real problem comes, you, you, you're asking them to be the bad guy twice, okay? So he's the bad guy in the first place for saying, no, this ain't going to work. And then when the whole thing sifts out, and then you come back and ask them for to, to say, well, okay, they did this, 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 and this, and it's not quite really what you're looking for, but does it work? Well, the answer is, in my book, if he's going to still uphold the fire code, which he's bound to do, the answer is still no. Nothing changed. We still got a problem. It still doesn't make it. So I, it's like you're asking him to, you're asking him to be the bad guy twice. And if by chance he flip flops and says, well, yeah, okay, we can let that pass, well, now he looks wishy-washy. So he can't win.
That's the idea. Yes.
Last comment I have on this is, you know, if we, if we did to make the changes, and Rick, the fire chief, takes the vehicle up there and it tips over, vehicle gets damaged, or the person that's in the vehicle gets hurt, what, what are the five of us going to do? Fred, what's the first thing we might say? Why did you go up there? It goes right back against because we changed the money, he didn't have the proper road to go to. So that's, that's how another way that it can go. Why did you? Well, but why did we? Thank you.
Ken.
One last rebuttal to Mark. You know as well as I do, you know, there's a lot of things in your trade that, you know, is code, and then there's function as well. So.
Agreed. But.
Just going to leave it there.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Gibson?
Before you go, the parking lot by Keyless is looking awesome.
Yeah, it's coming. Yeah, it's going to look good.
Where are they going to park that lift truck?
Oh, I don't know. Across the street, hopefully.
I hope so, too. Then he's, then he's got to register it so it'll get more tax money.
Okay, guys, here we go. Committee reports. Scott Yello.
Uh, first, I would just like to thank Chief Walker and Erin, if she's still on, that that was an awesome tricentennial celebration. So thank you for organizing that for the town of Barrington. So, Planning Board, probably the main thing that we did is, we had a robust discussion of the master plan update in terms of survey questions. So we worked with Stratford Regional Planning to develop some survey questions. We gave a lot of input into the questions. Many of them were not yet ready specifically for our needs in Barrington. So the commission will be sending us a draft of questions. Our committee is going to meet, actually without because they're only contracted for so many meetings. So we'll be doing that in September. Uh, and then we'll have some survey questions we can look at. Uh, and then, uh, in October, hopefully, we'll be ready sometime mid to late October to distribute the survey. And so any ideas on distribution? Happy to hear them.
Mr. Gibson.
Conservation Commission met July twenty-eighth. The, the topic that was discussed the hundred and sixty-three acre parcel in Stonehenge Forest, Dwayne Hyde from Felt presented on it, and, and their interest in seeing that conserved and proposed some things around that. It marked, uh, length of that forest is a lake, and so it could be part of the cyanobacteria mitigation efforts. So there's, there's interesting and just how that would happen, they would like to try to have comes to how to pay for that. And so, um, that's something that they're discussing.
And the price taken.
Mr. Bailey had a question.
What's, what's the tax revenue on that property?
Don't know.
Thank you. I would say we should consider that, too, because it'll go from that to nothing. Thank you.
But I imagine it's in current use, right?
It's in current use. He's made it a discount of
I understand it.
I think there was a plan to do a development there a few years ago that, for various reasons, was not successful. Connor might know. There were, there was lots of road and access issues, I think.
There were previous development attempts and conservation attempts prior to this. I don't know the details of all of them. Um, but the, the comment that the property is in current use is correct. And so the tax, the tax revenue impact will be nominal.
Okay.
Thank you, Connor.
Anything else, Mr. Gibson? Trails?
No. And that's the last time that the, the trail program's up and running. Jack, there's, there's been a lot of interest that I've heard.
Trail trackers up and running, and we opened up Raising Hill Farm for our trail system there.
And, and it's a spiffy, it's a spiffy patch, too. It's a spiffy patch you got. A patch to walk all the Barrington trails. Very nice.
For the first winter.
There you go.
It'll take a while. It is heat.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Gibson? Mr. Scotia?
Okay, the rec is moving forward with the grant for their van. Um, they're in their last two weeks of summer camp. And there is a retro night coming up August twenty-sixth at Barrington Elementary School. From five-thirty to seven-thirty, um, you can bring your, well, kids, family, bikes, rollerblades, roller skates, scooters, and cruise around the school for the night. They'll have a DJ with life-size games for the parents on the lawns and the little ones to play with.
Cool. Good. Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much. I have upcoming ZVA meeting. I have an upcoming library meeting. Uh, if I may make a comment under the section that allows me to talk about concerns.
Yes.
I have a concern. I think that we should consider the people, as Joyce had talked about, putting a piece in our new town report, considering that it's been three hundred years. We have the committee, a picture of the committee should be there, the, uh, uh, write-up on them and different people that are there. So that when people look at it in twenty-five years, figure out how it worked, they'll try to see how many of those committee people they could rope into doing the three twenty-five. But it was, well, seriously, it, it, it was, it was excellent. I mean,
He's moving up.
Sat there on the road, everybody came down, it was nice, quiet, everything was marked off ahead of time. I cannot tell you how nice it was with the committee and doing all of that extra work. And also, you know, we have, uh, uh, police force, we have the selectmen, we have all our other boards that should be considered for the three-hundredth anniversary book. So that's only a suggestion to do, because I don't want to have anything to do with the book, but I just want to do with the input. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. You have a school board report, I think, or complete, and I could beg at the next school board meeting is the sixteenth of August, which is next Tuesday, I guess. The transfer station is meeting on Wednesday. We'll have more information, I think, at our next meeting. And the, uh, Budget Committee is going to have their preliminary meeting right now. I think it looks like sixth of September. It's still working on that for their organizational meeting.
When's the final deadline to have everything to Connor?
I forget. What is your, what is your date, Connor?
Everything from who?
From the department heads.
Early September.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, public comment, uh, three minutes, uh, anyone in here? Ms. Hardikoff has her hand up. Been patiently waiting.
Think I've dropped ten pounds.
We do the best weekend.
I'm, I'm happy about that. That was something to celebrate. So I brought this from four and a half minutes down to exactly three. You're welcome to time me, but I'm going to talk fast, and I talk very loud. Um, unfortunately, that's just how my husband will tell you this, how my voice projects when I mention it about something. Tracy Hardikoff, forty-eight, Stone Farm Road, Barrington, New Hampshire, speaking today from my personal viewpoint. As we approach a deliberative session on eight-twenty, I call upon the residents of Barrington to stand up for our town administrator and our town treasurer that have worked on behalf of this town for many years. I compel our residents to truly be the will and voice of Barrington. Compel our select board to stand up for our public servants that have been placed in leadership and treasurer's positions. When a gross oversimplification of complex land use and zoning turns into an attack on the livelihood and careers of seasoned, ethical, and hardworking employees, it's time for us all to stop what I personally title the narrative gone awry. This town operates with ethics, transparency, and with proper legal guidance. And now that all proper steps for land use variance have been followed, the petition drafter should consider this issue settled. I will repeat, this land use zoning issue is settled. The only next steps are for the business that has enjoyed years, free of commercial taxation, to build a beautiful new facility on their commercial property, then open the doors of that business, thrive, enjoy the fruits of labor, the influx of revenue, and then pay commercial taxation. Opportunity cost is the loss of what we could be doing while we're doing something else. Our opportunity cost from this petition is high. Much time and money is to be wasted. As a municipality, our town has been lucky to operate under the umbrella of Connor McGyver's administration. Connor's educated in public administration, he's well-weighted, and he gives thoughtful response to all actions. He follows select board directive using all proper avenues and legal guidance to act on behalf of the town. He's increased resident participation in town government, increased transparency, and done an excellent job in leading the town as reflected in both work performance and operational outcomes. Connor motivates his department heads and his town employees. In fact, to quote the petition drafter, the biggest impression that was left on me was they, the employees of the town that work under Connor, are not just checking the box. In other words, they're certainly not just doing the minimum needed to keep the machine running. They're clearly doing a lot with resources that they have, and in turn, providing great quality of life services to the town. I ask the entire town and the drafter of this petition to reflect on this. How do you think these exceptional employees have been led to perform at such high levels? Perhaps because they have a direct supervisor that encourages them, gives them the tools and the resources they need to perform their work well. That is transformational and servant leadership. It's balance. That is what Connor brought to our growing town. So as residents attend August twentieth deliberative session, I implore our residents to thank Connor and Peter for their hard work as this town rapidly grows. Thank you.
Any other, uh, public comment?
Sure.
Please.
I thought you got one opportunity to.
You were up once already, Mr. Russell.
You once told me you could do it up to twice.
I read the rules.
Oh, no, rules are.
Okay, okay, I got you.
One gets one. It, yeah, check, check the.
No, that's fine. I'm not going to argue.
Okay. Uh, anyone online? Anyone else here? Chief Walker?
On behalf of all the employees that were the benefit of your positive vote tonight, I will say thank you very much. I appreciate that for all the other employees that got missed the first time through. Thank you. The other thing I want to say is it's been an honor for the committee to do the three-hundredth anniversary stuff. We were beyond ecstatic. We were beyond ecstatic with the outcome of the parade. We were a little bit disheartened. We worked hard to get the Budweiser Clydesdales into the parade and a situation beyond anybody's control on Saturday morning. They had to bail, but what they did was to their credit is they came down with a truck and a couple of horses and they set a couple of horses up in the field behind the post office and so that the folks that were enjoying the parade could see the horses. And they very graciously ran a Budweiser truck in the parade for us, not the wagon and the horses, but that's okay. But reflecting a little bit on it, I think the committee really felt that we've had nothing but positive comments about the parade and obviously for some, I didn't work as hard on the parade as some of the other people did, but a lot of work in the last year and a half and really wanted to make sure that this was something the town could be proud of. And I think we succeeded in that and the positive comments because of it. It really, to me, I reflected a little bit and said, you know what? Nobody can say that the parade was a huge success because of the Clydesdales. The parade was a huge success because of the townspeople that participated in it, but more importantly, the townspeople that, that, that watched it. So on behalf of our committee, we thank you for the support that the town's given us, in particular the board of selectmen. And, uh, we got a pretty neat spooky walk coming up in October, so.
Not over yet.
Our next one, yes, that's.
I thought the cemetery tour was awesome.
Yes.
And I hope those stories are captured.
Yes, and we're gonna try to capture that and we're actually gonna put a book together and we want to put a coffee table book together that'll be available after the first of the year. But, um, a few of us because we're, uh, I don't know, silly, I guess, for lack of any way of putting it, have decided that we don't want it to end because it's 300 years. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna try to put something together to do something yearly, whether it's a Barrington week or Barrington days or Barrington something. And, uh, our intention is some of us old people are gonna get this up and running and we're gonna turn it over to some of the younger people in town to keep it going, so.
Next year. Did you guys hear that?
Peter Cook says we're gonna do a Christmas parade.
I think you should bring, just as a suggestion, get the cane going again.
The cane, the cane is out there. The cane is, uh, being held by Mrs. Borodovchuk right now.
That's good.
Thank you.
Public comment, uh, keep it short and sweet, but, uh, the, the parade event, um, was awesome. Uh, I was fortunate enough to be in the parade and see all the people come out and what a, what a great group of people. Um, the, the small town vibe was there, you know, people were happy, cheering. I mean, nothing but positives. And, you know, hat goes off to the tricentennial committee. I just wanted to confirm, it was something that came through the rumor mill that the, the town hall was delayed because of the loan paperwork didn't get filled out. And that is not the case. Running into final punchless issues with construction, that is the, uh, the reason why we're seeing that delay.
So, Doris couldn't get here.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other public comment from those here? Okay, those online? Anyone online?
I think Mark wants to speak.
Man, true.
Mark, you're back. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were, uh, public comment. Apologize.
Nice to see you in the.
That was good. Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanna echo Chief Walker's comments on your decision with the retention bonus. I appreciate it. My people will appreciate it. And Jim, I appreciate you for watching out for the dollar. Okay? I respect what, I respect your position. Okay?
Appreciate that because it's not easy and I know I didn't gain a lot of fans.
I know.
But gotta speak both sides.
It was an agonizing decision and I respect that. Okay?
Appreciate you.
And to answer your question, could people just grab that money and run? Go double dip and get a sign-on bonus someplace else? Yeah, they could, but you just made it a little tougher for them to do so. So this went from a possible morale breaker to a morale maker. With that said, I hope in the shuffle here, we don't lose track of the compensation study, the need for there. Bonus or no bonus, we're still dreadfully behind the times as far as, as far as compensation. I'm, I'm, I'm running into it more and more every day. And it, this is gonna have a tumble-down effect if, if it's not stopped. If you think it's tough to lose a few employees here and there, try losing a few disappointed, disgruntled and discouraged department heads because they're sick of, of the revolving door of help that they've got to train and retrain. It's not fun. It is not fun and that's what you're gonna be facing, especially as your department heads get a little older and they can see the horizon that's right there. It's like, do I want to do this anymore? Another thing that if you, if you raise the bar on the wages and, and make the jobs someplace that somebody would be very reluctant to leave because they couldn't find anything comparable anywhere else out there. It would allow you a lot more holding their heels to the fire on accountability. Because now you can constructively criticize them and they ain't gonna be quick to say, go ahead and fire me. I can find another job tomorrow. Maybe not like the one you got. So just something to think about. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Well timed.
Okay, anyone else in, in the building here? Okay. First time, everyone. Anyone online? Uh, excuse me, if you'll raise your hand, recognize you. If you're on telephone, star, star six. Wait till we recognize you and take yourself off mute. I don't see any. I don't see any. Brittany?
Nope.
Scottle doesn't see anything either. Good. All right, then the session, or I'm sorry, the public comment section then is over. I believe we need to have a non-public session. Motion.
Take a motion to enter.
Thank you. Second. Mr. Bailey, all those in favor? All those.
Electively.
Thank you very much all. Thank you for picking up. Thank.
Misunderstood.
No, that's, that's.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's, I know.
That's why I didn't argue with you.
They're, they're here. It's in the public.
Bye, Donna.
I got you.
Thank you.
She does, uh, BVS.
Like to stick around?
Yeah.
You did not.
Yeah, let's go.
I know you did.[1107.68]